Are we ready?
You're right, like right across the street, like 4th Street.
Whenever you are.
Well, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm glad to see that we got some people here tonight. So, our town hall tonight is talking about, you know, volunteering and some things that we can do in our community. We're trying to put some things together this year as a, you know, working with the chamber, working, you know, we wanna, we wanna get everybody kind of involved and on the same page. And I think we've got a good group that wants to work together. And so, you know, we're putting this out to start talking to people and see, you know, start showing the opportunities that are out there to volunteer. You know, one of the first things that's going to be coming up is Founder's Day?
After Hours, but I don't need volunteers.
Okay, well, we have an After Hours event for the Chamber, and that is April the...
Nine.
Nine. And it'll be at the Depot. Give me the time.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
And it is open to anybody that's interested in becoming a member of the Chamber. If you want more information on the Chamber, my guest speaker will be Jessica Garden. She is running again this year for the legislation. So, she'll probably preach a little bit on that.
Okay, so.
How much is it?
Five dollars.
Five?
It won't break you.
Anybody, yeah, come if you wanna know more about the Chamber, wanna get involved, wanna volunteer at the Chamber, wanna help. There's lots of opportunities. I'd say even if you're not a member of the Chamber, there's lots of things you can still come volunteer for, help with, you know. There's opportunities. We can, we can find that opportunity between the Chamber and the city. There's so many opportunities to come help in your community. But talking about moving on to probably the next big event, it will be Founder's Day. That event's gonna take many volunteers.
Yes.
And so, I'm gonna let Clara, if you don't mind, talking about some of your different events and what you need help for, car show, you might talk a little bit about some of the different events.
Do what you said.
Sure, get up here and...
I do need volunteers for many of the, to kinda break up the day because sitting there all day long and not getting ready to go to the bathroom or go get lunch or anything like that can really wear on a person. So, I need volunteers that even if you could work an hour, two hours of the day, that's great. We have bouncy houses. Bev, I was gonna put you on bouncy houses. Excuse me. For a couple hours, if you don't mind. I didn't bring my drink too. So, anyway, we will need volunteers at the Chamber table to relieve people there. I'll visit with the vendors. Down at the car show, we will most definitely need somebody down there to help out. I'm sorry. I get hot, that acts up. But anyway, we will need people that really work down at the car show. I need somebody to sell fifty-fifty tickets. I need somebody to sell just regular raffle tickets. We have to keep the money separated. I need to raise some t-shirts. That money has to stay separated from all the other money from the car show. The registration money stays separate from the car show. This is to show how much money we brought in from food truck deal, okay? So, I will need volunteers for all those. Down at the Founder's Day Inn, it's fairly easy. You just check the tubs, make sure there's water in them, ice. There's, should be a tub that we're gonna set up by the van. You make sure there's water in that and check the ice in that. So, we need volunteers that's willing to check those. We'll have a little bit of tub of water down by the bouncy houses for those that monitor the bouncy houses during the day so that they have plenty of cold water. So, anyway. But we just wanna kinda watch out for people, make sure everybody's taken care of. If you sit at the Chamber table, you don't have to have a whole lot of knowledge of, you know, what am I doing? You know what I'm saying? You're just, they're still lost or anything like that. Because we have the information right there to show you. And as far as registration goes, I will be there, down there, when the vendors come in and pull, put them in their spots. What I'd like to do is put vendors on one side from All-Star down and after Beckman's, all the food trucks. And then the bouncy houses in the middle, down there by the medical closet or closer up if we have to. I don't want people to have to walk through the door. And then the car show will start from Tabor's and from the other side on down. I'm trying to get the car show as close to the vendors as I can so people will go to the vendors. And I still need vendors. So, if you know anybody out there that sells something, send them my way. Because I still need vendors. I got plenty of new vendors. But I've been going out to different flea markets, events myself and handing out information cards. I emailed over a hundred or more applications to the people. So, but as of now, I have a hamburger truck, french fries, and those chicken wings. I have, and I'll list this on Facebook too, so you guys know what I have. I have two snow cone trucks coming in. They both work together. They have agreed to work together. So, anyway, but they, they're local girls. They have agreed to work together because they have had issues before. And I told them unless they can work together, first one that signs up gets it. I have an ice cream truck. She also sells the snow cones, but she has to agree to let Jared Thomas's wife sell her ice cream as well. So, because we're different. Our ice cream's in cups and Jared's wife sells them on the stick. So, anyway, what else do I have?
Do you have barbecues?
Yes, meatlovers coming in. They, they emailed me for an application, so I've held their spot. They have emailed me about the application, but I'm sure they'll get it back to me. They're just slowly usually about giving it back to me. So, I do have a barbecue truck. I have popcorn and pork rind truck coming in. They've been here before.
Popcorn what?
Popcorn and pork rind.
Pork rind?
Yes, they have. You take those pork rinds and country muffin, pork chops are good. I have the cake, the cake butt girl out of Norman that's coming in. And I'm sick of them. I just can't think of them all off the top of my head. But like I said, I just, and that's another thing. You need to make sure that all trash cans are pretty well kind of cleaned up. You know, they get overflowing or sometimes it's kinda, like the sales city workers. My ass maybe not fit or bag it up yourself and putting up a trash bag in there. We're trying to get them at the Chamber. That's about it.
Have you thought about maybe finding people who have gators or we could use?
Yeah, city golf carts is what I was gonna ask for.
Can we, okay, let me finish. And these people who can't walk, like the older folks and people who might be on a walker or cane or just can't walk, giving them rides, providing rides for them to go up and down Main Street?
Yes, we can do that. But if we can get the golf carts.
Something I need to look into. Because some leases are limited, you know, where you can't do those kind of things. And not having done this before, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I, I need to read it, but.
We will have parade, and it will be, as far as I know, it'll be about four-thirty, five o'clock. The vendors clean up a little bit. I am telling everybody they cannot throw out candy because I mean, I don't want any of the kids to get banned or whatever. So, if they want to get candy, walk, they can have somebody to walk through to them. But if you want to participate in parade, you need to sign up. That's all right.
Sadly, I'm, I'm, we're all fighting this stuff right now. So, if any of you need a job that you could participate in or help with, please, you know, as the meeting's ending, let her know if there's something, if you can sit a couple hours and, you know, sell t-shirts or, you know, monitor those water bottles or whatever it is. I mean, there's lots of things out there that I think, you know, can be done. And there's lots of jobs. I think the jobs range from, you know, easy, easy to probably some more difficulty. But so, I think, you know, it doesn't have to be anything too hard. Up to you wanna get involved, there can be some things that, you know, take more effort.
Volunteers too to help keep the parade organized. So, I want to.
And I know there's a couple of you that probably participate in the parade that you have in the past. So, there you go. You know, you may be ones that could help kind of get people set up. And then I don't know where motorcycles and all that comes in, but it seems like it's usually more towards the end. So, you might be able to help do both things if you're gonna participate and, and do that. There's quite a few Chamber events that are set up this year. And as those Chambers events unfold, you know, those also coincide with some of the things that, you know, I'd like to see the city participate in. So, Halloween's always big everywhere. I mean, if you've been uptown on Halloween, holy moly, you better be prepared for kids.
Especially the elderly.
Yeah, there are lots of them. So, they enjoy it, it's great activity, you know. One of the things, and the librarian was gonna try to be here this evening, and she had another obligation. We have lots of volunteer time that can be done at the library. There's always things there that, that can be, you know, books and different things that she just needs help with. So, I know a lot of people don't think about those things. Again, I always say we need to have specific jobs set out because people don't like to just walk through the door and wonder what they're gonna do. I mean, at least with her, she's told you. You can come say, "I'll be the person that fill those water containers." You know, that's, that's what makes people comfortable. I know what I'm gonna go do. I know what I'm gonna ask for. It's not what you're gonna throw on me that I may not be expecting. So, you know, we'll try to get better lists of volunteer have, where, you know, you know, like what it is that the library's needing, you know. If they're needing somebody to come in and, and, I don't know, help paint a wall. If they're needing somebody to come in and, you know, repair and tape up books. I don't know what all the things that could be, but I'll try to get a good list. And that way you know what you're maybe going to volunteer to do.
What would be nice to is if you're volunteering for the Founder's Day, it would be nice if you just go into the vendors that are there by themselves and say, "Hey, I volunteer at the Chamber. It's lunchtime already. You need to be relieved just so you can go to the restaurant. I don't mind watching your booth while you're gone," or go get you something to eat. And just kind of ask if you can do something for them because that goes a long way.
And, 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 you know, they may not, they may not let you, but.
Right, they may not let you, but you ask them.
Or you may go rather get their lunch, you know, whatever it is.
Yeah, go get it for them.
Yes. Christmas this year, there's lots of things that, that I think we're gonna try to incorporate. And we need some volunteers for Christmas. One of the things, we'd like to take our tree that we have in the park. It did not fare well with the wind, and we wanna put it uptown. And we wanna do an actual tree lighting, have an event up on Main Street, kind of kick off the holiday. So, that is something we're, we're scheduling in right now. But we would need some volunteers for that event. Won't be a lot of difficult things, but again, I'll have jobs, we'll have jobs listed. I'm hoping to, once we get past Founder's Day, like set up, you know, in... Founder's Day, give me the dates, is?
May eleventh.
May the eleventh.
Rodeo's the tenth and the eleventh.
Yeah, so we get through May, June, I really wanna start working on Christmas stuff. I, I'd like to get a church to volunteer to do maybe like a live event. And I don't, they don't need to commit to do every weekend. I'd just like for a church to commit like a Friday night or Saturday night. I'd just like to have some scheduled events. So, I'm gonna be out trying to get some of them to see. I'd like for a church to do the community scene. And if that means, you know, the parking lot at their church, their sanctuary, or if that means we're going around town singing carol and whatever, or groups of people going around town. I think I wanna try to get back to some of those more old-fashioned type events that we've had, you know, in the past. That's kind of our theme is old-fashioned Christmas. That'll be our theme for our parade. We'd like to see gobs of parade participants this year, you know. And if we start, we start talking about this in July, you know, we can get people to sign up and get them in here. And old-fashioned Christmas can mean wow. The possibilities are endless. So, but I think it's just more about whatever it is your thing is and, and getting out there and, you know, volunteering and finding out what there is to do, what to, you know, participate in. There's just so many things. And I don't know if any of you have any ideas or things that you would like to see happen. Obviously, if you're here, you have some thoughts. I mean, you came, so you, you know, you're at least interested. I'm glad to see that. Anything that you're, want to see happen?
Really good. Now, on the car show, you, I know at Paul's Valley Car Show, they always wanted vendors that dealt with car products and things and some clothes, t-shirts.
I didn't find a few vendors that had enough. But they have to be the newer parts. I didn't know that they had like junk parts.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Like, what if you went to the little tube dump, you heard, uh, you know, they had some vendors that carried a bunch of new parts and stuff. I didn't buy a couple of those.
People who do car tags, those kind of things.
I did buy a couple of those, unfortunately. Basically, had they known, they would've came, but they were going somewhere else that weekend. But I'm looking for somebody that does tags, so.
Our uncle Ben here, he has a, oh, what kind of cars he got? He wanna know if there's gonna be a class like for your, this is totally original. Are they gonna do that or is it?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember if there's an original class. I think there is. I believe there is a little class.
He wouldn't want me to ask because that's his car.
I think there is a little class. So, and, but we kind of shortened the classes. We withdrew, I had somebody that came in, in fact, it's Alex Alexander, or Andy Alexander from the, I don't like to call him Alex. But Andy came in, he plucked cars down there on the main.
Main road.
Yeah. He came in, he looked at the classes and he said, "You know, I eliminated this one, this one, and this one." But I didn't get into a custom, so he used all cars, they were custom cars. So, he kind of looked at my list, helped me kind of revise it a little bit.
So, if he run his car, he, he would be in some class.
Yeah, his band's gonna be playing, by the way. They're called the Middle of Nowhere. If anybody wants to look them up. They don't sound too good on Facebook, but they sound wonderful on the CD. There's a lot of, you can see bars and stuff, so there's a lot of bar that you hear.
Background.
In the background on Facebook. But other than that, he brought me a CD. It was Clearest Day. He sounded really good, so we hired him to play. So, and that gave me the Middle of Nowhere band.
We know a couple that sells clothes. I don't know if they.
Yeah, but mostly they have boutique. They sell clothes. Welcome to come.
They have new items. They have them at the dog trade.
Yeah.
A young couple.
I thought I'd come down to the dog trade and pass them out.
I think it's a good place to pass out vendors.
On Sunday morning.
Sunday morning till five, you can get there like at five o'clock in the morning.
Till eleven o'clock.
Till eleven.
Our Fourth of July activity is the share on June the twenty-ninth. And so, that's another event that we have coming up. Kevin with the radio station is working on bringing in a, a band. And we're right now in the process of raising some funds for the fireworks. So, another activity that we're out kind of beating the bushes for. And I think, I, I don't know what all the activities they'll have besides the band going on, whether.
We talked about doing a few vendors, local vendors.
Some vendors and.
Like we had last year.
I think that day we'll do, probably have the free swim. And so, we'll have some things for the kids to do.
And we're gonna have new vendors as well.
This is what I was telling you about last time. I talked to you about doing a run for the city.
Oh, yeah, I seen this.
We're doing, we're gonna do one for the veterans here in town.
Poker run, it's gonna be a poker run. We're gonna start at the outslides.
But we'd like to do something for the city for good, you know.
Okay, all right.
Y'all would be interested in something like that.
Absolutely. Well, we have some different things that will be.
And this is gonna be the first, first weekend in June.
We were actually gonna do a fishing tournament that weekend, but none of us know anything about fishing. So, we kind of, we have to put it last year on a board of, can we really do this? I reached out to him, but he hasn't reached back out to me.
This is my volunteer.
Oh, you guys are just going to tell them I caught a fish.
So, again, no, we'd love to have anybody that's willing to, you know, do something like that for us.
Yeah, we need help.
Yeah, we'd help you with it. We, you know, we'll show you, run down, how to do it and everything. We'd help you with it.
This is my volunteer.
What time does it start?
And that, that one is to raise money for new?
This is gonna be for the veterans.
The veterans, raising the veterans.
And what it's for is a wish and a picture for the riders. Because I, I'm one of the honor, I am the honor guard right now. This guy right here, he's a veteran. If he dies, I'll escort. I hope you know, I hope you know, but I'll escort the funeral to the cemetery.
Hey, is there, is the Patriot Guard riders that are all on, are they affiliated?
This is completely different. That's completely different. We're doing it for our post, but if I'm kind of sorta, because we haven't got our charter yet, American Legion, and they're completely different from the Patriot Riders. But I mean, if he wanted the Patriot Riders down there, I mean, that's fine. And because I'll do it ourselves because he's in our post down here. And, you know, I do it from our post for, for who, the veteran that's in there. Any veteran can tell you the truth, but, you know, I just, I lead the hearse all the way. Because the last one I did was from Maysville down here to Green Hill. And it was, and Cheryl Crochet, she took a lot, lot of pictures of us coming down by the ballpark, you know, and we come around that way. Well, it was driving us, it really did.
I went to one the other day that they did some procession. And they put the casket on the first cemetery, on the back bed. And they took them all the way down from Blanchard Funeral Home all the way down up to the, head back onto the interstate and circle back around, all the way back to Blanchard and then took them back to the cemetery, they have a funeral home.
I mean, it was my first time doing it.
It was mine.
If a veteran dies, and all the funeral home needs to do is contact our post down here, post twenty-three. And they'll let me know. That way I go to the funeral director and talk to him, see where we're going. If it's just here, up here at that cemetery, that's fine. There's some cemeteries, you know, they take the way down to cement and all that thing, and I don't know where they're at.
It's nice.
Using young people.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to share or? April, May, June. I will be setting up another meeting in June. Probably a little more organized with some pieces of, hopefully some more activities maybe to sign up for. So, it's everybody's mission in here to go bring one more person in with them. And let's, let's drag some more people in here and, and get them hooked up into activities. And, you know, that's, that's kind of our mission. And anybody you know out there that, that can volunteer for a day for Clara, send them our way. We're gonna need them for Founder's Day. So, anybody else have anything? Anybody else wanna, have?
Clara, are you wanting small business?
Yes, anybody that wants to be involved.
And that's the same way with the poker run. If you wanna drive a car or truck, come on, hey, hey, guys, welcome to come. I want this thing to go on. Even dragsters gonna run. I don't know how much fuel you're gonna drive.
What is the first, first Monday in June?
In June?
Till Saturday.
So, what is the, what is the Monday, like the third? Probably that will be when I look at doing the next meeting. Kind of stick with kind of this first Monday. And, and it may be more of a, like I said, more of an organizational type, you know, have some. We made you a little bit of town hall to begin with, and then we may go into more of a, you know, sit down in the back and do some organizational type things. So, we probably video the town hall portion of it. And once we go into, you know, if we want people to sign up and that kind of thing, we probably won't video past half a week, but, so, come join us. And again, do you wanna, you have anything to say or add or?
Comments? I just wanna bring people aware that Sally's got her plate plum. I mean, plum, and she's gonna find you out. I'm going to try to open up a town hall at the library on the sixteenth of each month at seven o'clock. And it's, it's not a, it's where you can speak your concerns. I'll be there. And it'll just be no, no politics whatsoever. We'll just talk about whatever situation you want. We'll just talk about whatever situation you wanna talk about, prioritize and just try to get it off the ground. I would appreciate anybody to show up on the seventeenth, uh, sixteenth at seven AM.
More people and lengthy involved in this. I don't see a lot of people here.
That's it, you get a lot of people that say they will volunteer. You will run into them, and when you call them. Time to say, I'm sorry, I'm not available and I can't help you. So it really hurts.
That's why I don't wanna say for sure I'd be there on the Founder's Day, but I'll most likely be there and I will help if I, if I'm ready to help.
Are they, for Founder's Day, they start at five o'clock in the morning, because we have to set up the tents. With the awnings, and there's two of, we have to set one up, we were setting one down there for the car show. This year, we should be able to set everything right there in the middle, if we have everything tapers down with cars. And everything should be handled right there at that one booth. So the car show, then part of the other one be forward, there'd be chamber. And the booth, and we should be able to, you know, so if you have any questions, I'll be there. Tim will be there, I think.
Like you'll have some place for motorcycles to park, special, special parking for motorcycles.
I think motorcycles come in the middle. Because they're small and.
They can stack them up pretty tight.
Have you talked to Cheryl? She's such a good photographer, the cover art.
I have not talked to Cheryl. I had run in with her, not running, I mean, I seen her. Crazy ass, I knocked that, that kinda run in with her. I kinda, and bypassed and seen her, we said hello and.
But it'd be excellent to have somebody around to photograph all this stuff. They'll get the easy news.
It's very hard for the chamber to get. That's one thing that I try to do during the day, take pictures, post on Facebook. So if you're a volunteer. Don't hesitate, take some pictures for Facebook, to encourage people to come down to Founder's Day. Do a line video. I mean, and say, hey, you're missing, if you're not here, you're missing out. So, but this is the first year I have had trouble getting vendors. Or just regular stuff, the art stuff, not food, just for good. This is the first year.
Has the price gone up or anything?
No, I cut it at forty dollars. In fact, I'm thinking about dropping to thirty-five next year, just to see if it makes a difference.
Or maybe do like an early bird signup, you know, like do a really nice cheaper rate, if you get, so you can get them committed.
That's a good idea, a very good idea. I like that. I've kinda thought of that too. I thought, I can't do it now, because it would hurt people that's already signed up, so I thought I'll have to wait until next year.
No, that would've got different dates this year too, so the first and the second.
Yeah, I have to have banners made, and those cost money too, but I'm gonna try to get Sean over at. What is that? Really, yeah, Lynn Rock, the, the Dune for me. I like twist his arm and see if I can get him to do it for me. At no charge, or little charge at all. Uh, no, no charge sounds great. He usually does, he usually gives me money. Helps out that way. But if he would give me, gave me money one year and gave me discount on the banners one year, so. Basically, he kinda gets money back anyway.
Anybody else have anything to add?
Will there be bathrooms? Do we have to run home or?
No, there'll be bathrooms, I'll try to find out the bathroom.
Well, we've not really made but one Founder's Day, to be honest. We've been working all this other years and.
We have porta potties behind, by the. Behind the light, he brings them in, he cleans them up, and they bring them in for me, and they set them up. I usually have two. That sit right behind the van. And then, I have two that sit over by the, they're actually cleaning, cause I have to get the handicapped ones. As well, but they come from Blue Moose. But I set up two regular ones back behind by the. Is it, the building?
Oh, ECP building?
Yeah, back behind Beckton's, in the alley there. We set two of them back there.
Yeah, you try to put signs out, where, you can't put sign in the concrete.
Yeah, it's kinda hard. Try to put a round pole with the tide, and then we look over, and next thing we know, it's down and gone and.
Well, what you can do, put a trash can, you can put your sign on a trash can. Set a metal trash barrel out, put your sign on it.
I wonder if Brandon would have some, um. The small barrier things that we could put. Some signs on.
Maybe some of the things that I set out for the stop signs, maybe.
Yeah, we'll have to ask. We might have some things that we could help with.
Uh, what Kim's reminding me, polycarts. We will need polycarts. Otherwise, the trash cans on the sidewalks will be overflowing. Am I crazy?
Lisa, are you, are you writing too? You gotta help me remember.
Dump the trash cans on Friday, so it'll be empty for Saturday.
Yeah, cause if we don't get polycarts, they will overflow those trash cans on the.
I know other places that I've been, and I may need to talk to Brandon, one of the things we've done is brought a. City vehicle up, like a trailer or something that can hold the trash cans, the sacks. So to, if, if somebody else is helping to empty sacks, they just go throw them in the back of that, we can have it sitting there, and then just haul it off.
And that would help the city out a lot, if we have the, where we could change our trash bags.
Yeah, so that.
My bodies with the trash bags, and the, the volunteers wanna go around and make sure trash is tied up and put in that.
Let me, will you help me remember?
And make it look nice and like, and people from the car shows wanna come back and, and work it out there saying, hey. I went to the Founder's Day and it was really organized, and it was clean, and they kept it clean, and there was no trash everywhere and, and everything, so. I will have the rodeo in the parade, so they will be last.
It's rough on motorcycles.
Well, and I hope nobody mentions anything about their horses and going back. Because that's how they got their feelings hurt, and I had to really talk to them about coming back.
Just tell them they're giving out pre-fertilizer.
You should go back there for your house, you can pre-fertilize your plants.
Call Smorkills.
There's one thing I'd like to say is, I would appreciate if y'all could like branch out. Talk to your neighbors, the ones that you're friends with.
I was saying, y'all let you talk to my neighbor.
But anyway, I'd like to see this town hall meeting get on the ground, and it's. We need, or I feel we need, I should say. And like I said, Sally's.
The world today, there's too many people don't care anymore.
Well, and that's. I can depend on y'all, say, hey, we're here, come on.
I can tell y'all something now, this year we got Sally, and Sally's been nothing to do to us at Chamber, she's got sense. She helps us all the time, girl. Needs something, stays true. It's not a problem. Ain't like where Dr. Willis a couple years ago, where everybody's fighting and stuff. We were trying to work together and make this thing work. You go to different del, town, watch what's going on, the whole town gets sent to it. Not just a few people, the whole town does.
And I think that, I think that kind of takes a whole, I think the more the town sees it, the more to grow. It's not, you know, you just gotta, you gotta get back into it, you gotta get that, kind of that fighting spirit. But it starts with us. I mean, however we present it, if you present it as you're downtrodden, then, you know. Then that's what you're gonna get, and, and I don't believe in that. There's never anything you can't overcome, so you just keep, you keep moving through and it'll get better, so.
It's our Christmas party, it was wonderful.
Yeah, my office door is always open. The chamber office door is open. If the door says closed, well, I'm sorry, but, but anyway, my office is always open for anybody to come in and make suggestions or. Even if they wanna vent about something that, that happened. And we take that as criticism and we write it down, and we try to fix it for the next time around. Sorry.
I agree, I thought that, that like the Christmas party, I thought it was great, but wouldn't we like to try to get many people participate?
I was walking back from the start line, down the way, I heard people on sidewalks, man, this is real good prayer, I said, so it helps, we got the city working on this. It helps a lot.
Let's, let's get, let's get the churches involved, let's get, you know, let's get the people back excited about being up there. We saw the kids, we saw. It was, you know, that's what we do all, you know, get back to him and get, get Santa Claus and talking to all the kids. We might have an end with Santa Claus.
Santa Claus might be that individual right over there, maybe. He's on spring break right now.
We're gonna have a float this year, right?
Do what? You know we're gonna have to have a float. We're gonna have to, you know, we gotta beat what we did last year, so. That's kind of our mission.
Will there be like a petting zoo, anything like that?
Well, that's what we, for, on Founder's Day, petting, are you gonna have anything like a petting zoo, anything?
Do you know of anybody that has animals that would like to bring them in? I have to look, kinda look and kinda see.
There's somebody around town that they take the little kindergarteners and, and. I think it's kindergarten, preschool, they take them to somebody's farm around here that, that they have. Little donkeys and goats and sheep and all that, that they, like they can go in and pet. I don't know who, whose farm it is, but they've got somebody around town that. That has that kind of thing.
I'll post it on Facebook and then I'll try, I'll go talk to one of the teachers, see if I can find out who it is. Because I did think of that, and I also thought about, I don't know who it is to have the horses one year. The ponies, but I think she's out of Marlow. Was that who it was?
I got her number.
Yeah, I want her number. Text it to me. I wanted to see if she'd come back and get pony rides, the kids enjoyed that.
She may bank that there, guarantee.
Yeah, so.
For your Christmas thing, there's that group over at Chickasha that they have the horse drawn carriages.
Sleigh ride, is that, that carriage ride? That would be so cool. Yeah, and you know, our Main Street lights up pretty. I mean, so it's, it'd be a nice little ride down it, I think.
So everybody pass words, that's all I'll go by.
So, we know we have things to sign up for in, in May, and we're gonna have to get with her and do that. And then June the third. Well, kind of organize that and start looking at some of our more long-term things. Please, sign up though to get, you know, knock out these positions for the car show, for the, you know.
The Summer Festival's big, like I said, we, last year we had like, what, five or six vendors that came in. There was the, the Esports Center did pop one, and somebody from the school did something, somebody came and did, did some goat soap. I'll get with Anthony on that.
One is a venture. I do volunteer. I go and get one, little tank where they can soak you by throwing the balls in. Kids love that.
It takes a tractor, it's pretty heavy. I think a better deal instead of having dunking tank, have a good, have a bucket water and dump water on it.
We will be using Carl's Nutten Stage, um, and, and. Andy Alexander already asked me about that, so we're gonna make sure we have that. He has a big sound system, and if we happen to have to move the car show down some, he's got a smaller sound system. But he's, he's gonna bring with him that we can borrow to use, so that everybody, the car show can use.
The cars gonna drive in the parade afterwards?
Do you guys do like a evening cruise Friday night?
Is, is the duct tape still usable?
No. No, last time we did the back day, it's dangerous. They wanted to sell it to us. We, and then Ronnie, when he looked at it, he says, I would buy. Some, I don't know, it was a duct tape that the Masons used.
Alright, well, if we don't have anything else, we will.
If you got any questions around there about the sixteenth of each month. Don't hesitate to, probably, y'all probably know where I live, and most of you do, right? Don't hesitate to stop by the house and chew me out, or help me out, or, you know, whatever, just to get it up off the ground. I deeply appreciate it.
I will be close Wednesday afternoon, I have a procedure done on the road, so.
If you guys are out and about and you stop by and you're committed to doing something and you, she's not there, run by our office. We'll send her a text that says, hey, so-and-so stopped by. We, we, you know, we have, I get it, more, kind of more normal hours, but it's just her, she's gonna be out and about some. And, and we're more than happy to give her a message or whatever if we need to, so.
If you're running to a local food truck that wants to be part of Founder's Day, I'm more than welcome to have them. But I have to be cautious as to who sells what, because if, well. I would tell a truck over here sell hamburgers, and a truck over here sell hamburgers for different prices.
They won't come back.
No, it's a conflict issue. So that's why I said to you, Ben, that he needs to come talk to me, because he hasn't came to see me yet. And I've tried to reach out to them.
Oh, the guy I sent your way?
Food guy, yeah.
Okay. Food dude.
Oh, okay.
Well, let's hope it gets big enough at some point, that's not even an issue. We can, we can utilize them all, so, so, yeah, I hate to turn anybody away, but, you know, I hate to have. Conflicts of people fighting in conflict, yep. Because then they won't go back.
Alright, thank you guys, I appreciate you committing to be here.